I'll call the meeting to order, please register your votes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an opening by the city of Seward County body, the City of Seward County, by Nebraska, opening the Act of Conducting Business. A copy of Nebraska Opening's Act is included on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording process in the closest meeting room. Any citizen may address the council regarding items included on the agenda and are asked to complete and hand any speaker card to the clerk. Presenter shall approach the podium, state their name and address for the clerk's record, and are asked to limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall be determined by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city reserve the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the vote.
Kayler.
Here.
Colterman.
Here.
Tanyas.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Francis Gatto. We have a form present.
Alright, thank you. The first five items make up this evening's consent agenda.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
The motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Francis Gatto, Kayler, Tanyas, Colterman, Miller, Morgan, six zero.
Alright, our public hearings, 7:00 PM. Consideration of ordinance approving the preliminary and final plat of Bluff Road Acres, second edition, a replat of lots, seven and eight Bluff Road acres. Tim, welcome.
Evening, Mayor, Council. What we have is a application by Mr. Thomas Keaton to divide an additional nine lots into rural residential lots. If you recall, a couple of years ago, on the southeast corner, 252nd Bluff Road, we rezoned a rural residential and eighty acre parcel. Five lots were done at that time, were platted at that time, leaving two other larger lots. Thomas and his partner have since decided to move forward with the other two lots, which consists roughly forty-nine acres, and divide them into nine more rural residential lots. As you recall, the property is outside the city limits in the extraterritorial jurisdiction. Not served by city utilities does not require the extension of streets into that development. However, where these nine lots are along the south property line, there is a driveway access that Thomas and I have discussed, that he is designed to meet rural standards for the city of Seward standards. At the end of that road is a turnaround. We have taken into account emergency vehicles should they get in there and get out. Storm drainage, as usual, rural residential is done over land. We do counsel them, however, when it comes to residential lots and help them through that part. Sewage, I'm sorry, yeah, sewage and water systems or fire permits through NDEE, NDWEE now, and NRD, and so they govern that. With that, Planning Commission recommended six-two to go ahead with the preliminary and final plat.
Alright, it was six to two?
Six to two, yes, sir.
Is there any summation of what the two had concerns about?
It came down to, there's quite a bit of discussion on the wells and the number of wells. And if that was a determining factor, I assume. One for sure, the other I'm not sure, so.
Alright, thank you. Any questions from the council with Tim? It's a public hearing, so I'll go ahead and open up the public comment portion of the public hearing. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item, please come forward at this time. Welcome.
Good evening, Thomas Keaton. Eleven nineteen Augusta Drive, Seward. So anyways, I started working with Tim about, I don't know, four months ago on splitting off. It was supposed to be just one lot, doing administrative replat. And because we were approached, or I was approached by John over there, who's your local anesthesiologist, that he needed to live within a certain radius, and so he wanted to live out of the country, and so we decided that, yeah, it made sense to sell off, you know, five acre parcel. Going through the motions on that, it just wasn't necessarily going to work out for potentially future plans to just do the administrative replat. And so, we decided to do it the right way and just go through and do a major subdivision, basically, which is in front of you today. You know, the big concerns from the Planning Commission, I guess, or the public, the neighbors around there, is the wells. We had that same thing come up, I guess, last time when we had the initial six. And so, I guess from then to now, doing a little bit more research, talking to Ernst, who did pretty much all those wells in that area, and, you know, come to find out, really, the city's wells are on the same aquifer as what these wells are pulling off of, and so, really, there shouldn't necessarily be much concern as far as water consumption, because if we're building more houses in Seward, I mean, that's essentially the same thing as, you know, tapping into this aquifer, right? And so, anyways, with that being said, you know, we don't necessarily have, at this time, plans to sell more lots, but we do want the flexibility to do that if we wish, I guess. And so, I guess, would like you guys to approve this.
Alright, thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, thank you. Anyone else wish to comment on this item, please come forward at this time. Welcome.
Joel Turmer, fifteen seventy-seven, two fifty-two Road. We live right across the street from the development. When we dug our well twenty-five years ago, we had to dig it three times. We, first of all, nothing the first time, no water. Second time, we dug a well clear at the end of our property, and we got seven gallons of well. And this last time, we had it bewitched by a farmer here in Seward County, and he wished it and found us a good well at twenty gallons a minute. So, and since we went through that headache before, I'm just trying to be a little concerned about it. I'm not saying nay or nay, I just want everybody to know that it's not poking real and fine, you know? And when Tim Hughes developed his little portion across from Dr. Hoff, I, we had to put in a big blue, one of the big blue filters from Pelican, because we were drawing a bunch of sugar sand, which is that real dark mucky sand that gets in your toilets here, washers, toilet, washer dryer, and all that stuff. Dishwasher, anyway, roads equipment. So, we did notice a little change when they added those few wells across the street. When they added them across the street to the east, we don't notice any difference. But if our well does go dry, or, you know, comes down low, who would help us or who would take responsibility in getting us deeper? Or how does that come about? You know, if they do develop nine extra lots safe, what's the guarantee that we'll get fixed? Nothing, I guess, I don't know. Back when Biz Rolsmeyer built or dug that well on the corner out there, there's a well that's eight hundred gallons a minute. He had to go around to the people of the neighborhood and pay for their own, to dig their wells deeper so they wouldn't run dry. That's what, that's what he did back in the day before Dr. Hoff purchased his place. So, we're talking probably in the late seventies, roughly, in there, so. Just, you know, who helps you, who's the responsibility is that if they? If mine's good now, who would help you down the road, I guess? If we notice a difference after these homes are built? I don't know, I think that's all I have. Just water is the biggest concern. And I did not realize there's a different, same aquifer as what the whole city of Seward was until tonight. If you go to, like, the propane tanks corner, there's a well there that's only ten gallons a minute. And is it because of shortage, or what's the deal there? You know, because you're going a little further east. You know, I just don't want to run ourselves out of water. I mean, my property is worth something, you know? It's because Thomas wants to invest, I already have my investment, so.
Alright, thank you. Hey, Tim, was there ever like a hydrological?
I'm sorry?
Was there ever like a hydrological survey or study done?
I couldn't answer that, I don't know that there ever was. I did talk with Jerry from the NRD a little bit after the meeting. And this area, they do have a map on their website, and this area is not in their concerned area, for whatever reason. He did say they could test, drop a monitoring well, and move over a hundred feet and get a different result than the monitoring well. So, it's kind of a hit and miss thing because of the soils over there. There's just no guarantees.
My understanding is that we have two aquifers that we pull from. Right, we have the Ogallam and the Dakota below that?
No, I believe we just pull from the one, correct? We're testing on the other.
Mike's going to correct me here, but I believe our aquifers are the High Plains.
Most of them all at one.
Yep, and then the newest well that we installed, South Four, I believe, is in the Dakota. We tend to find that the Dakota aquifer is more to the south of Seward. So, like, I believe Milford's water supply is pulled off of the Dakota aquifer. The biggest reason for our access to the Dakota is it gives us a different water profile. The Dakota tends to be low in nitrate count, but then we get other things in the water that come from the Dakota that interact differently with our chlorination and other things, so. Any water source is going to have certain setbacks and profiles that you have to balance too. But ours is the High Plains, predominantly in this area, and then the Dakota, sort of to the south. Because we were unable to locate it further north by the water plant.
Are any of these residences in this area on city water, or are they all on wells?
They're all on wells.
If at some point in the future they're annexed into the city, does that, do we have a requirement that they be on city water?
Well, you have city code that gives them two years to hook up. Should their well fail, we would not let them sink a new well. We'd require them to hook up automatically.
But would they be, would it maintain the well and be on city water?
I'm sorry?
Would they be able to maintain the well and be on city water?
They could maintain their well for watering purposes only.
For potable?
For potable, if they hook up, then that's where that water would come.
So, as far as answering your question, I don't know about liability, but at some point...
It's a model eight, the city water is a model eight.
Well, I'm just saying, you were asking whether options there would be. Obviously, that would be one possibility as we continue to grow. And the more subdivisions that you put on the edge of town, the more likely we would grow that way. Because at some point, people want utilities regardless. And so, anyway, any other one, any other member of the public wish to comment on this item? Please come forward. Welcome.
Thank you. Marla Bumba, I live at two hundred fifteen, sixty, two hundred fifty-second. So, I am on the, in the same section as this development is going to be. Again, our concern too is all the wells. I think there already is ten wells in that section. You're going to add nine more, possibly. And, I mean, then what's, what's to stop Dave Jones then? He's got land right there. What's to stop him from developing that and adding, you know, sixteen more wells or whatever? You know, and like Joel said, our concern is, when we run out of water, who's going to, who's going to pay for us to get our water then? The city isn't going to be out there by then. You know, when would the city get the city water out to this area? You know, if we run dry, whose responsibility is it to get us, our wells dug deeper? Is it the city, is it like Thomas's development? Who would help us with that once, once the wells go dry? Right now, there's nine wells out there, and you count that going at a hundred and eighty gallons per minute. So, you're going to add another, you know, nine wells. And, you know, that's a big concern. The other concern is the access road, there's only one road in and out. You know, we talked in the past, that road is very busy already. And, you know, it's just, cars go flying down that road like crazy. It's just, it's just not, I mean, you're talking about possibly eighteen more vehicles going in and out of that driveway, along with the other, all the other ones on Bluff Road that come out of there already. But I guess our biggest concern is our water. You know, if we go dry, who's going to help us with that? So, that's my biggest concern.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item, please come forward. Welcome.
Welcome, I'm Justine, twenty-four, sixty-nine Bluff Road. We just had a few concerns, one was water, and the other one is also lagoons. When you have nine more wells, you know, have nine more lagoons. Our soil does not accept septic tanks, so which means our, all these homes will need lagoons. With that, you'll have the quality of life and aesthetic problems with the murky algae, which can be an eyesore and can also affect our property values and beauty of our community. Also, one is fire safety. When we build these close, homes so close to each other, how is our EMT and first responder supposed to get to everyone safely? With this division, there's only one way out, one way in, one way out. We saw more wildfires and field fires in the summer. And our volunteer fire departments are already spread thin, and with the limited water capacity, how are we supposed to put out these fires and field fires, field fires as well? And how do we propose to keep it from spreading? Also, as current six lot owners there, we all built our homes to face south, which will be the next new nine lots. And we were not told when we purchased these properties that there would be these nine lots in our backyards. So, it'd be not fun if you have neighbors facing right out your kitchen window. And then also allowing this house development, what's your long-term sustainable infrastructure for this? And so, questions, are you ready to ask?
Any questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item, please come forward. Seeing no one else wishing to comment, I'll go ahead and close the comment portion of the public hearing. I'm going to tune to the council for any other questions or, yes?
I did sit in on the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting and listened to a number of concerns, and the questioning that happened from the Planning Commission was very thorough. They were looking at the big picture and the potential for development in that area. And they offered a lot of questions about things, but they didn't have any real solutions to many of these issues. I know they, the idea of getting access to emergency equipment in that area on the road and then being able to turn around at the end was a big issue for them. And, and they also talked about the potential for, how do they put out fires there? They don't have any hydrants or anything like that in the area, so. They would use the rural access from the fire department to help with that, so. But it was a good meeting, they, yeah, they asked a lot of good questions. And I was very particularly interested in the number of patrons who came in and expressed their concerns. So, a lot of good discussion.
Okay, thank you, Rich. Any other questions or comments from the council?
So, Tim, with the wells, has the NRD had any input on any of the concerns from planning council or planning?
They did not, they didn't stand up and speak or express any concerns during the meeting. In our discussion afterwards, again, talking with Terry, we are going to get together with the NRD and put together a trading session for water over there to learn a little bit more about it as a planning commission. The county planning commission did it once, I believe Commissioner Seaver sat in on that. He mentioned during the planning commission meeting, and it was very informative. And he also discussed what he learned there, that he didn't see any issues with the, with the water over there after sitting in and listening to the NRD's discussion on that.
And then the only other concern I have is that, the one, one means of egress to that whole line of...
And that road, on the plat, you'll notice it is designed to a certain width, with a turnaround radius at the end. We made Thomas exclusively put that in there for that reason, so a fire truck can get in there and make the turn and get back out.
But, and, so in code, it's not required to have two means of egress, is it?
It is not, not, not in the rural subdivision.
Okay. Because I remember that being a point of, my concern when we were talking about, Rich, we're on addition.
Right, right.
To where they had it in there and we went around that, but is that, that, I'm assuming it's classified under a different subdivision?
Right, and we have different rules within the municipality versus out in rural. I think within the municipality, and Mike can speak to this a little bit, Augusta Drive, for instance, was built incorrectly, too many feet before you have a turnaround and be able to get out versus the number of cars. In a rural subdivision like this, it's twelve hundred feet, it's twice as far, because there's a lot less traffic going in and out of that subdivision as opposed to a municipal subdivision.
Thanks, Carl, any other questions or comments from the council? Does anyone like to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce the ordinance.
An ordinance to, an ordinance to approve the plat entitled Bluff Road Acres, Second Edition, a plat of land located in the north half of northwest quarter of Section twenty-three, Township eleven North, range three east of the sixth PM, Seward County, Nebraska, as here an actor set forth to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. The ordinance has been read by title and is designated as ordinance number twenty-two-five dash twenty-three, and the title is hereby approved, needing motion to dispense with that statute rule.
Send it.
I have a motion and a second, is any further discussion? Seeing none, the question is? What's that?
It's statute.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Francis Gatto, Kayler, Tanyas, Colterman, Miller, Morgan, six zero.
This is ordinance number twenty-two-five dash twenty-three, but anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted and issued?
So, second.
The motion in a second, is any further discussion? Seeing none. The question is, should ordinance number twenty-two-five dash twenty-three be finally passed and adopted? Please register your vote. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Francis Gatto, Kayler, Tanyas, Colterman, Miller, Morgan, six zero.
Alright, thank you. Next, item number two is also a public hearing. Consideration of a resolution amending the redevelopment plan declaring an area, Lincoln Streets to, Lincoln Street to Robert Street and Kent Street to Second Street, as substandard and blighted and in need of a re, of redevelopment. I'll get fine.
Well, Tim, do you want to do, do you want me to lead this one off?
Go ahead and you kick it off.
I'll kick it off, Bobby. This was a request from quite a while back. We had two projects that were looking at potential TIF funding, and they were located in areas that were not currently in our blighted and substandard area. Reminder, as always, whenever we undertake TIF financing, it has to be in a designated blighted and substandard area. It's designated by Planning and Zoning in the city council through a rigorous study that is performed by the appropriate planning organization. And so, we engaged with the council, we said that we would engage with a planning, design firm, Bobby's laughing, maybe, to undertake that. And in the process of doing that, and that was agreed upon by our developers, which are here tonight, so they're covering actually the cost of this plan. They undertake this study, and what we found was, is initially, and Bobby can talk more specifically about this, when we looked at just the individual areas, and to remind you, it was the period property over on Third Street that burned down two years ago now. That was kind of the big, multi-unit older home that had, like, different apartments built into it over time. And then, what we call the Concord Apartments down by Hughes Brothers on Tenth Street. There are three units right now with a quarter of that block vacant. That quarter vacant block was looked to be redeveloped as well. And so, in looking at those properties and adjacent things to them, it was determined by Five Rule Planning and the staff over there that we probably wanted to look at more of an area. And so, ultimately, that was the area that was developed here tonight. Bobby will come up from Five Rule and kind of explain the methodology and the statutory requirements of that briefly, to kind of get through and see how they anticipate putting this together and how it meets all the standards and some very specific criteria that we see within this area. I'll also lead it off for Tim that this was, item is approved unanimously.
Unanimously, unanimously, eight.
Yes. So, any questions for me? If not, we'll have Bobby come up and introduce herself.
Welcome.
Thank you. I just liked how you said rigorous, I was kind of smiling about.
Okay.
And then you also said briefly, so I registered that as well. So, Bobby Pettit, and I know that, but I'm the owner of Five Rule, Rule Planning. We are a community development and economic development consulting firm based out of Carney. We work specifically, mostly, with communities five hundred to five thousand. So, you're a big city for us, and we, we work a lot in the realm of redevelopment plans, getting areas into an area, into a redevelopment area, and then seeing the, the benefit of being declared light and substandard. We've done, I was counting it up, I think this is maybe our twentieth light study that we've done this year. So, I think we have a good, I think we have an efficient, but also accurate process of looking at these areas. We don't decide what the criteria is, that's decided by community redevelopment law. We are just hired to basically do the footwork and spend the time to prove that it's there. I will say, whether it gets declared blighted or not, we get paid either way, so, there's no, don't worry about that. I'm just going to briefly go through our study. The first part of the study just is, lists out community redevelopment law, and it lists out the criteria that we have to look at. There's also a description of the area, we have to physically describe the area. And if you saw the bill for publishing that description in the newspaper, that's also not my fault. That is a phone call to your senator, because we have to publish that two times before the Planning Commission meeting and before the city council meeting. Then we get into the, first we have to talk about the substandard criteria, and then we will talk about the blight criteria. And if you are thinking, wow, that's really redundant, you are correct. Again, call your senator if you think it's a little redundant. So, the six criteria of being substandard, dilapidation, deterioration, age or obsolescence, conditions that endanger life or property by fire and other causes, inadequate provision for ventilation, light, air, sanitation or open space, and high density of population or overcrowding. So, I don't, I believe you guys all got a copy of the study. So, on page nine, we discuss the dilapidation and the deterioration. We used to do the good old fashioned windshield assessment survey where we would drive by properties. I hated doing that, and I, and I feel like it was the best way to do that. We now just utilize the county assessor's data to do that. So, the rating, the condition rating of these structures where it goes all the way from good down to worn out, that's the county assessor's rating. I think that's a much less biased way of looking at it anyway, because, you know, the value of your property is directly tied to how much revenue the county gets. And so, I feel like the assessor is doing their very best to put the condition of that property as high, give it as much value as they can, because that's, that's tied to revenue. So, where we have eighteen percent of structures, and we have roughly over a hundred structures, so roughly twenty percent of the structures were either badly worn or worn out. So, I feel like that, that clearly proves that there's a lot of dilapidation. You may say eighteen percent is not substantial, but eighteen percent of a hundred and eleven, twenty structures in this... You may say eighteen percent is not substantial, but eighteen percent of a hundred and eleven, twenty structures in this, in an area this small, I would say that's a substantial amount. And then, I'm not gonna talk about the pictures of deteriorated buildings, because I don't think that's very nice, we put it in there anyway for, you know, the shock factor or whatever. Uh, on page twelve, then we also talk about deterioration of public improvements, and so, if you have constituents or residents that don't, that don't like living in an area where they say they're blighted or substandard, we briefly talk about the structures, but we're mostly focused on the infrastructure in the area, and, um, so, in this area, we talk mostly about deteriorated sidewalks, again, working in outstate Nebraska, communities five hundred to five thousand, I always know I don't have to look very far to find a deteriorated sidewalk network, and I did not have to look very far in this area either. On age or obsolescence, uh, so I did, I did deterioration and dilapidation, I'm on to age or obsolescence. According to Nebraska Community Redevelopment Law, anything that's, um, older than forty years is considered to be aged. And as I told your planning commission, uh, I turned forty-two years ago, and so I'm still struggling with this, even though it's been two years, and so, again, people don't wanna live in a, don't wanna stay there in a blighted area, you know, we all know that you can look pretty darn good when you're forty years old and you still could use a lot of redevelopment projects, right? So, it's kind of the same way with the buildings. So, it's easy, again, outstate Nebraska, I always, I'm, I almost always ninety-five percent sure that the majority of the buildings are gonna be built before nineteen eighty-four, so. It's like seeing, you know, how old you have to be to drink alcohol, this is just gonna get more and more depressing for me every year as I continue to do this kind of work. And yeah, I'll look there and I'll be like the same age as my kids, and then I'll get real depressed. Okay, the next page on obsolescence then, so that was age, we talked about age, the second thing is obsolescence, so, uh, we looked at, we asked, we got a hold of utility data and looked at the water mains in the area, and so on page sixteen, we've highlighted all the water mains that are, uh, four inch mains or less, and the reason for this is that, um, although it's not a law, we look at the recommended standards for waterworks, and so, I'm not a civil engineer or an attorney, but I hang around enough of them, and, um, they have directed me to, uh, follow this recommended standards for waterworks, and so, today, by today's standards, you would not put a water main down your city streets that are, is more narrow than six inches. So, six inches would be the minimum, eight or ten is probably what's preferable. You wouldn't put a water main down a street that's gonna serve several service lines that is, um, narrower than six inches. And so, you have quite a few four inch water mains, where you're talking about adding housing units, uh, to this area, I think this may come up anyway, so, we say that these, these water mains are obsolescent, right? We're not saying that they're not working, but by, in today's standards, you wouldn't put in mains this narrow, and so we say, these lines are obsolescent. So, that is our proof of age or obsolescence. On the conditions that endanger life or property by fire and other causes, we discussed about how those poor pedestrians have to share the street with vehicle traffic, and so that endangers life, and I know growing up in small town America, you're like, well, then everybody deals with that, and that's why I say most, everybody can meet the criteria, if you look at some of these criteria. So, on page eighteen, we had to have, uh, it says any combination, so I mentioned this at the planning commission meeting, not knowing that your administrator was an attorney, but I did say that I've hung out with enough attorneys, oh, oh, hi Kelly, I've hung out with enough attorneys, that, um, I know there are specific words in the English language that mean a lot, and so, to me, combination means a lot, so I had to have any combination of the factors, so, I'm gonna say that I had to have two or more. So, we needed a minimum of two factors, and we found evidence for four, so. That is the substandard criteria, moving on to the blight criteria. There's ten subjective factors and then five objective factors, so I'm, I'm raising middle schoolers and teenagers, and so I know what subjective means and I know what objective means, and so the subjective is, we could argue about this if we want to, we could argue about whether or not this TikTok video is appropriate to put out into the world or not, right? That's subjective, and then objective is, it is what it is. So, on the subjective, we need any, um, combination of the factors. Most of the factors under subjective, we already sort of beat that dead horse in the substandard portion of the study, so substantial number of deteriorated, deteriorating structures, that word substantial, I'm guessing is where the subjective part comes in, so that's where I'm saying eighteen percent of your structures are badly worn or worn out, according to your assessor. In an area where there's a hundred and eleven structures, that's roughly twenty structures. Deterioration of site and other improvements, uh, talk about your deteriorated sidewalk network. The third one, faulty lot layout in relation to size, adequacy, accessibility or usefulness, so, uh, the Americans with Disabilities Act requires municipalities to have, uh, ADA accessible curb ramps, uh, throughout the city. I know you have some of those here in Seward, I know that as time and manpower allows, you work on putting in more curb ramps around the community, but, lucky or unlucky for you, those curb ramps have not hit this neighborhood yet, and so we're saying that a faulty lot layout exists in relation to accessibility. Improper subdivision or obsolete plating not a factor in sanitary or unsafe conditions, the pedestrian sharing the sidewalk, diversity of ownership not a factor, tax or special assessment not a factor, defective or under other unusual conditions of title not a factor. And then, existence of conditions that endanger life or property by fire and other causes, uh, the lack of the sidewalk network sharing the street with vehicles. On the objective factors, we have to have at least one, so we're given five objective factors, we have to prove the presence of at least one. Probably for all of my career, I will never be able to say the unemployment in the redevelopment area is at least a hundred and twenty percent of the state or national average, um, so that wasn't a factor here, um, the average age of units is at least forty years old, uh, the average age of units in this area is ninety-one years old, so, not a problem, we found that criteria. The next two, more than half of the plotted or subdivided area is unimproved, that's been in the area for four years, not a factor. Per capita income is lower than average per capita income, never gonna be able to prove that either in my line of work, because there's just not enough people to know what the per capita income is. But then the last one, uh, the area has had either stable or decreasing population based on the last two decennial census. So, be the twenty-ten census and the twenty-twenty census, so the census collects data at the block and then the block group, and then the census tract level, so we, so in this part of Seward, we can go back and look at what the population was of this area just based on the block, um, how many, the population of each block. And so in twenty-ten, there was three hundred and sixty-two residents, and in twenty-twenty, there was three hundred and sixty-three residents. So, in some of my communities, I'd be thrilled to have not lost anybody, but gained a person in ten years, but in Seward, I think you could do better than that, so, um, I'm gonna say like gaining one resident in a decade would be steady or decreasing population, so. Uh, page twenty-six then is a summary, so we needed at least two subjective factors, and I'm telling you that there's five there. We needed at least one objective factor, and I'm telling you that there's two there, so. So, not only has this area, uh, meet the criteria being substandard, it also meets the criteria of being blighted.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council?
I just have one question, so when you use the county assessor site to cover the condition of the houses, what information were you able to pull on that, that came to this conclusion?
So, we're just able to, um, we're in a new age where I can just go on to, um, we're in Seward County, seward.geworks.com, I think is your, uh, provider, and then we can just look at the parcel ID number, uh, in the area, the parcel ID number on the website, and because we're only dealing with a hundred and eleven parcels, we just manually, uh, went through and looked at every parcel and what the assessor said each condition was. And it would just have been on, it would have just been on the residential units.
Right, so like, I pulled one up right now and it says condition NML, what does NML, N-M-L mean?
NML?
Yeah.
Probably normal, which would go with average. And is it a commercial property that you're looking at?
No, it's just a residential one, pulled up on three twenty-one Lincoln Street. So that's why I saw a difference on what your graph had on it compared to what was in those.
The labeling?
Labeling that you found on the assessor's site, so.
Right, yeah, so I can, I can provide that table for you, the assessors, some of them use normal, some of them use average, so, we, uh, we match them up together, uh, so in this case, we would call normal, average.
So, do you know off the top of your head what a substandard one would be?
I do not. My trusty assistant, Doug, could probably tell you, but he's not here.
Good. Any other questions or comments from the council?
On, on that question though, because I know I did not give a very good answer, so, um, like if you wanted to throw out, because I need any combination, so if you wanted to throw out dilapidation, um, you, we would still have at least two factors, so we could, I would still feel comfortable telling you that it meets the criteria, even though I just gave you a very squishy answer.
I mean, at the end of the day, um, I mean, this is just the statutory hoops, so you have to jump through to qualify the properties to be eligible for TIF, right?
Yeah, mm-hmm, yeah.
So, however we get there, as long as we get there, um, that's what really matters as far as meeting that statutory requirement, so then, it would be TIF eligible, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I wouldn't get too hung up on, on, along, unless it was, unless there were, unless you were concerned about all the, all of the different conclusions, which I don't think is the case here, I wouldn't be as concerned about, um, one or two, just because in most cases, you're gonna hit it with the age of the build, of the, of the structures in any community that's established. And you, and a lot of the issues with the sidewalks are gonna be fairly common in communities, um, and so, uh, this is something, when I worked in a legislature, we dealt with a lot, because every year there's a bill to, to tinker with the TIF, uh, the Redevelopment Act, so, uh, it's, I wouldn't be too concerned, but if you have any questions, we'd like to get those addressed, uh, or any other comments. It is a public hearing, so I would open up to the public, uh, for any comments, if anyone else from the public wishes to comment, then we can return back to you for any additional questions the council may have. Anyone else from the public wishes to speak on this item, please come forward. I wasn't anticipating a rush, so, with that, I'll, I'll close the public comment portion, and we're back. Welcome. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Can I know one thing, Mayor? The mayor just mentioned that this is the first step in seeking TIF financing. This is not a guarantee, we noted this to the developers, and this is not a guarantee that their projects will be approved for TIF, but this is a required first step, otherwise there's no ability for consideration. So, uh, we already have another one that's looking, uh, adjacent to this and discussing, that's right off of this one that kind of got teed up lately, and we said, yeah, you will have to do another study and redo this, and that would need to be, even the study would have to be approved initially to even go out and look at it, uh, by the council, but this is not a guarantee of TIF, uh, the developers take this burden up on their own. We decipher if it meets the criteria, uh, another criteria is also the, um, I believe is it thirty-five?
Thirty-five percent, the city is second class, the amount you weren't thirty-five percent of the city.
First, we're the first class.
First class, I mean.
And I think it's in the resolution approximately twenty percent, I believe.
Yeah, we have lots of rooms that.
In areas, in our two mile jurisdiction, like the extra portion of the planned rail campus that was included, that does not count against that percentage. So, that's a substantial area, but not in the city, so it's not considered as part of that percentage. Lastly, uh, as redevelopment projects roll off, you have to go back through and remove those areas, uh, under some new laws, so there'll be some areas that will start rolling out as well.
You have to do a deep blight study.
Deep blight, yeah, so we get to pay Bobby more money.
I'm happy to do it.
Some communities get, sometimes residents get, um, a little salty about having their houses or their neighborhood included in these areas. I, I know at one point, I think Warren Buffett's house in Omaha was within a blighted and substandard neighborhood, and that's just because, again, we're, in order to meet that statutory requirement, you have to, you have these, um, you have these additional criteria that have to be met, and so by including houses that are older, for example, you can hit, hit the one that do the age and, and other factors, and so, it's, it's not meant, it's not like an official government stamp of your property is substandard in the sense that it's not a very good property, it's just that in order to access the possibility of this economic development tool, you have to go through this process, so. But that's the thing, I'll, I'll just add, I mean, I, my, my house is included in this, uh, this designation, so I, I have no objections, I mean, it's gonna just open up more opportunity for redevelopment in this area, so, um, yeah, I have no concerns on my end.
Gray and Jonathan will probably lead you down the road, but, um, and certainly, I always felt like that was unfair to get your aged property added, but we're not really planning on doing anything for you, but, uh, micro TIF is a thing that individual property owners can apply for now that are in the area.
Any other questions or comments from the council? So, we have, it looks, so, just so I'm clear, on item two, there's a separate resolution from two A, so, is that correct?
Yes, it'll be two resolutions.
So, unless there's any other questions or comments from the council, would someone like to introduce the resolution?
I'll introduce the resolution.
For item two, alright. The resolution has been introduced and is designated as resolution number twenty-two-five dash twenty-seven, would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted? A motion and a second is in for discussion, seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Francis Scott O'Kayler, Tanya's Colton Miller, worded six zero.
Any other questions or comments, would someone like to introduce?
There will, well, the.
Is there more?
Plan.
Yeah.
Just briefly, the redevelopment plan.
I'm sorry.
Briefly.
Then I picked up on that too.
Now that this is an oblited and substandard area, I'm not going to use, this is a blighted area anymore, I'm going to call it a redevelopment area. This is redevelopment area three, on the topic of utilizing tax or improvement financing or doing, I think, any other project, you would approve those as an amendment, um, an amendment to the redevelopment plan, or also known as a TIF contract, or also known, um, as a redevelopment agreement, all three of those things are the same. So, once something is in a redevelopment area, you need to create a redevelopment plan. The literal jury, I guess, is out on when the timing is right to create a redevelopment plan, um, but I like to leave you with a redevelopment plan, so that when it's time to start talking about redevelopment projects, the shell, the plan has already, already been created so that you have something to amend. Otherwise, you will, you'll be paying somebody else later down the road that probably costs more than me, so probably a lawyer, to create a redevelopment plan, because then they're gonna have to create a contract to amend the redevelopment plan. That does have to be done as a separate resolution, as a separate hearing at planning commission and at city council. So, what's in your general redevelopment plan? Closely matches, um, your, well, it does match your existing land uses now, the future land use map that's in your comprehensive plan, and then a list of projects and activities that redevelopment law lists as a, an eligible redevelopment project. So, these are the types of projects that you can do, um, under community redevelopment law. So, I'm just asking you, I'm just giving you the shell, so you have something to amend later on.
Thank you. Any other question or comments from the council, would someone like to introduce the resolution?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Alright. The resolution has been introduced and is designated as resolution number twenty-two-five dash twenty-eight, would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
Send it.
A motion and a second, need for discussion, seeing none, please register your votes, please display the votes.
Voting in favor, Francis Scott O'Kayler, Tanya's Colton Miller, worded six zero.
Thank you, Bobby.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Bobby.
Under administrative items, item number one, consideration of a claim from Corey Hackbart, nine ninety-three, two hundred eightieth road, for personal property damage in the amount of four thousand three hundred twenty dollars and forty-four cents.
Yeah, this was a claim in relation to the, you've seen the temporary fence that's around the water tower, uh, we had that reinstalled during the Fourth of July, uh, as we were still kind of finishing up, and so we wanted to make sure when we had fifty thousand or however many Jonathan counted of our favorite guests here, uh, for our Fourth of July activities. That's a big thoroughfare back and forth to National Guard Museum to see and take what's going on over there. So, we put that fence back up as part of the finishing of the coating, painting process. We are waiting now to see if that's gonna remain, uh, we're gonna meet on site with our artist that's gonna paint the tower tomorrow morning, they'll be on site at ten o'clock, so we're very excited about that, we met Seth Boggs today on it. But, that fence will stay till then, that fence is a temporary fence, as you've seen with the weather lately, is not always the best to hold up to the weather. That fence is a temporary fence. As you've seen with the weather lately, it's not always the best to hold up to the weather. I think we had a very windy day one day and one of those panels fell and hit a vehicle, which was Mr. Hackbart's vehicle. Um, we did send it on because ultimately, the site is controlled by the general contractor. So we did send this information on to the general contractor. They were working through that. But as a precautionary, did not delay this if there's gonna be a denial or something else because that's unfair to the claimant. We brought it forth through this process as well. And EMC, if you recommend to move it on, uh, we'll work back and forth with the insurance company or the, the general contractor to make a determination about fault and all that. But then we just don't delay this and leave it in the hands of the Hackbarts to have to kind of like sit around and wait for us to see if they'll do something first and then we do this. So that was the recommendation of, uh, EMC and Mark Sorrell when we checked in. Any other questions yet?
If none, if none of us would like to make a, would like to make a motion to advance to the insurance?
I'll, um, move that we turn it over to the insurance company for consideration.
All right. Second, we motion in a second. Any further discussion? Saying none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor of Francis Gallow, Kayla, Tanya, Colton, Miller, Warden, six zero.
Thank you. Item number two, consideration of a voluntary annexation request. Uh, final reading for lot one, MICO subdivision, PUD, and the remaining portions of Seward Rail Campus First Edition, corrected plat and Seward Rail Campus PUD Second Edition. There's no reason for discussion, sir.
Uh, I'll say, does any questions?
All right. And note, this is the third reading. Orders declaring the annexation of certain contiguous and adjacent tracts of land, urban and suburban in character, more specifically lot one, MICO subdivision, PUD, and the remaining portions of Seward Rail Campus PUD First Edition, corrected plat, and Seward Rail Campus PUD Second Edition to the corporate limits of the city of Seward, Nebraska and extending the limits thereof accordingly. To describe the real estate to be annexed and its boundaries, to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form, to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. This is ordinance number 2025 dash 19. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as yet?
So, second.
The motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Saying none, the question is, your ordinance number 2025 dash 19 be finally passed and adopted. Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor of Francis Gallow, Kayla, Tanya, Colton, Miller, Warden, six zero.
This is the last ordinance for this evening. So anyone want a motion to make the ordinance as a part of the permanent record?
I saw move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor of Francis Gallow, Kayla, Tanya, Colton, Miller, Warden, six zero.
All right. Thank you. Item number three, uh, consideration of consent approving assignment of the U.S. Cellular Water Tower Lease Agreement.